Welcome to our Provo Municipal Council meeting, the evening's meeting. It is 5:31 PM on Tuesday, August 18th, 2020. This meeting will be conducted entirely via electronic means on August 10th, 2020, in accordance with the Utah Code 52-4-2074. The council chair, George Handley, determined that conducting meetings of the municipal of the municipal council within anchor locations such as the municipal council chamber presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present there. These are the facts upon which I made this determination. Utah has been in a declared state of emergency due to COVID-19 since March 6th, 2020, a disease outbreak which the World Health Organization has characterized as a pandemic. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, state that COVID-19 is easily spread from person to person between people who are in close contact with one another and the disease spreads through respiratory droplets when an infected person coughs, sneezes, or talks, and it may be spread by people who are asymptomatic. Federal, state, and local authorities have recommended that individuals limit public gatherings, wear face masks, and follow social distancing guidelines. Notwithstanding that Utah generally and Utah County specifically have been moved to the low-risk yellow phase, reported COVID-19 cases in Provo continue to rise at a high rate, more than 100 cases per day on a 14-day average. Physical distancing measures will be difficult to set up and maintain in the Provo City Municipal Council Chamber. Additionally, the Chair of the Governing Board of the Redevelopment Agency of Provo City has determined that its meetings are subject to the same risks and has adopted the same procedures as the municipal council. The meeting will be available to the public for live broadcast and on-demand viewing at youtube.com/provocitycouncil. The council requested attendees help maintain the decorum of the meeting by silencing electronic devices and being respectful to others and waiting. Sorry, I just lost my screen there for a second. And waiting to speak until called on by the council chair. In the current situation where the meeting is being held via Zoom webinar and broadcast over YouTube, I remind you to turn off your mics when not speaking so as to minimize the potential for background noises and conversations to be picked up, recorded, and broadcast for all to hear. I am George Handley and I'm joined by fellow council members, Dave Harding, our Vice Chair, Bill Fillmore, Dave Shipley, Shannon Ellsworth, and Travis Hoben. We're also joined by Cliff Strachan, our Executive Director, Wayne Parker, Chief Administrative Officer, and I see that the mayor is not quite yet with us, nor is Brian Jones, but I assume they both will be, and we have various staff and other presenters who will be speaking with us shortly. And I also note that Dave Sewell, Councilmember Dave Sewell, is away on family business this Tuesday, so he's not available to be with us. The opening prayer will be given by Cliff Strachan, our Executive Director, after which we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance provided by Councilmember Shannon Ellsworth. Are you there, Mr. Strachan?
My apologies, I was pulling to Dave Harding. Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for the opportunity to meet as a city council for the community of Provo. We're grateful, Father, for the freedoms we enjoy, the blessings of living in a beautiful community with wonderful people. We're grateful, Father, for the enjoyment we get from our friends and our neighbors here, and we pray that the decisions that the council considers tonight will be beneficial to the community and will be wise in their choices and in their effect. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
All right, I'll say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right, I'll turn the time over to Cliff Strachan for some instructions about public comment.
Thank you. There are three types of items for which public comment will be received. The first is the open public comment period. The council will allow up to 15 minutes for public comments on matters that do not appear on tonight's agenda. The second is for items that require a public hearing. For these items, time will be provided for all those who wish to speak. The third is for items on the agenda that do not require a public hearing. The council will allow up to 15 minutes for comments on each item. Because the city council is meeting virtually using Zoom webinar, and this meeting is being broadcast on the Provo City Council's YouTube channel, we have enabled telephone access to receive public comment, the numbers for which will be shown on screen during the meeting. Callers may have to try multiple numbers to get connected. When a caller is connected, they will be required to enter the meeting ID and enter the pound symbol. When asked for a personal ID number, enter pound. The caller will now enter the meeting as an attendee and will later be able to hear the meeting, sorry, and will be able to hear the meeting while muted. If a caller wishes to speak on the item being discussed, they can press star nine to indicate their desire to comment and then wait to be called upon. Callers will be called upon by the last four digits of the listed phone number. Please provide your name and city of residence before making your comments. Each caller will be given up to two minutes to speak. A timer will be posted on screen, and a beep should be audible to the caller when the time is up. A reminder that there is a lag of approximately 30 to 60 seconds between the meeting and the broadcast. To avoid confusion, callers should mute the YouTube or Facebook Live broadcast to hear the discussion in real time. The open public comment period starts now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Strachan, so we'll wait a few moments to see if we have anyone joining us for public comment. Caller whose number ends in 1670, go ahead. Sorry, let's see. Says talking permitted, but I'm not hearing anything, and then, there we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Bruce Haraguchi. My family and I live in the Tree Streets neighborhood in Provo, and I'm calling tonight to express my support for a potential UVX bus stop on Ninth East near the BYU Creamery. And I've chosen to comment publicly on this issue primarily to address the perception that the Tree Streets neighborhood may somehow wish to distance itself from the UVX system. And I think the reality is that since UVX began operating, many residents of the Tree Streets have used it to commute or to visit Salt Lake City, to get to the airport, get around town. In my own household, my daughter uses it to visit friends' homes in other Provo neighborhoods like Carterville, and this matters to me. I believe in community, and I think UVX helps build connections between our neighborhood and other parts of the city and other parts of our region. And a stop on Ninth East will help Tree Streets residents more fully utilize the UVX system alongside others, students, commuters, visitors to our city. I think this is something that builds community and is something to be embraced, not feared or resented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haraguchi. We have a caller whose number ends in 1542, go ahead. Still having a little bit of a glitch here. Sorry, it says talking permitted, but when I bring my cursor over it, it says unmute, and it won't let me unmute, so I don't know what's going on. Somebody have any help here? There we go.
Hi, this is, am I on now?
Yes.
My name's Carly Dines, and I live on 1304 North Locust Lane in Provo, and I'm also in the Tree Streets, and so I'm also calling to support having a UVX stop on Ninth East. My husband regularly takes the front runner up to Salt Lake when he travels, and having a stop there would be very convenient for us personally as a family. But I'm also, I'm also a believer in public transportation systems. Generally, we've, our family has lived in a few different places that have really robust public transportation, and I think it's a good thing for communities, and I think it could be a great thing for Provo as we're looking for ways to grow and attract the kinds of businesses and people to our city. I think having a great public transportation system is something that really could make us an attractive place, and I think it's also just good for things like air quality and as well citizens, especially who have less access to cars. And I, we have a car, but I also think not having a car is a good thing for a lot of families for a lot of reasons, and I'd love to see a stop in our neighborhood so that that can be something that our neighborhood could participate in more fully.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Dines, appreciate it. You have any other?
No, that's it.
Callers at this moment, thank you. Do we need to wait any longer, Mr. Strachan, or can we go ahead? I don't remember whether that becomes necessary once we've gotten started.
Right, that is correct. Once you've started, if you get to a point where you don't have anybody waiting to talk, you can move on.
All right, seeing no other requests to speak from the attendees, I will bring it back to the council. It is proposed that we approve the following minutes, August 4th, 2020 council meeting. Are there any objections or requested changes? All right, seeing none, I declare the minutes approved by unanimous consent. We will turn to our action agenda. We have for item number one, an implied motion on a resolution approving the form of the lease purchase agreement with ZMFU2, Inc., Salt Lake City, Utah, and authorizing the execution and delivery thereof for golf course maintenance equipment. This will be presented by Dan Follett, our Finance Division Director, and Brett Watson, Golf Course Manager. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Council Chair. Hopefully you can hear me, this is Dan Follett.
Yep.
So the golf course is in the process of replacing the course maintenance equipment at this point in time, and as part of that process, the dealer actually offered funding for that equipment at a rate of 4.2%. We felt that we could do better than that rate with a tax-exempt lease, and so we did an RFP for lease financing for that golf course equipment, and we got two responses back. The high rate was 2.02%, and the lowest rate was 1.78%, and the low rate was a response from Zion's Bank. They were the low bidder, and so we're proposing that the council approve a lease for the golf course equipment to finance that equipment. The amount of the lease would be just over $521,000. The rate, as I mentioned, would be 1.78%. The first payment would actually be due at closing on August 25th of 2020. That payment was included in the budget that was approved by the council for fiscal 2021. There would be five payments, including the first payment due at closing, so the final payment would be due on August 25th of 2024. And it would result in a fairly significant interest rate savings versus what the dealer is offering. I would be happy to answer any questions that the council might have about the lease, and Brett Watson from the golf course is also on the media or in the meeting and could answer any questions from the golf course's perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Follett. I have a question for Mr. Fillmore. You're muted, Mr. Fillmore.
Congratulations on the interest rate, sure can't beat below 2%. Exactly what equipment is this for?
Yeah, so this is for pretty much a brand-new fleet for the golf course, so with the changes with the medical school, we needed to downsize in some areas and upsize in other areas, and it just so happened that the equipment lease on our previous equipment was up, and we were looking for a new one, and so it allowed us to save money in the long run. So fairway mowers, greens mowers, T-mowers, a couple rough mowers, and two greens rollers are in the package.
Oh, great, okay. So, and the source of funding is what?
So the source of funding is what we have always had in our budget, so it's the revenue from the golf course, and we've always had an equipment line item, we're just changing out the equipment.
Okay, good enough.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Follett or Mr. Watson? Okay. This is an implied motion, so I will call for a vote on the implied motion, seeing no discussion, and I will, oh, yeah.
Do we need public input?
I apologize. Yes, we do. So we'll wait 30 seconds or so for any public input on this particular item. My apology. All right, seeing no public comment, but bring it back to the council. Any further discussion from the council? So I will call for a vote on the implied motion, and I'll begin with myself. I would, will vote yes. Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore? You're muted, Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
And Mr. Shipley?
So as an employee of Zion's, I'll abstain from voting.
All right, so we have one abstention, five votes in favor, and Mr. Sewell excused, no votes against. All right, we'll move on to item number two, which is an implied motion on a resolution appropriating $521,093.13 in the golf fund for the release of golf course maintenance equipment to be leased. This is going to be presented by David Mortensen, Budget Officer.
There we go. Thank you, Chair Handley. So this item goes hand-in-hand with the previous item, the previous item being the lease agreement, this item being the appropriation that's needed to acquire that equipment. So we would be adding $521,093.13 to the fiscal year 21 budget in order to acquire that equipment. That's all I have.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Mortensen before I open it up to public comment? So we'll open it up for public comment, if you'll excuse us, we'll just pause here for the delay for 30 seconds or so. Okay, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Mr. Harding, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank the presenters. I had a couple of questions coming into this, and their presentations answered my questions, so I wanted to thank them for their good presentations.
All right, any other discussion from the council? All right, I will call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with you, Mr. Harding.
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
And Mr. Sewell, oh, and myself, I will vote yes, and Mr. Sewell is absent, so that is 6-0 in favor. All right, we will move on to action item on the implied, sorry, action agenda item number three, an implied motion on a resolution appropriating $69,200 in the ice sheet fund for the replacement of the main fire panel at Peaks Ice Arena applying to the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, and this will be presented by Scott Henderson, our Parks and Recreation Director, and I will just remind the public that we will take public comment when he has completed his presentation.
Thank you, Commission Chair. As you know, when the city took over management of the ice arena about 10 years ago, there were a few systems there in need of repair, both the refrigeration, and I think this is another system that has been a chronic issue over these years. We've been able to do repairs working with our Facility Services Department in keeping going, but the determination has been that the fire alarm system needs to be replaced and has been timed out. Right now, we are greeting people to their visits with the ice arena with random fire alarms telling them to evacuate the facility when no fire actually exists. So this was a surprise that this was the year that it finally went. We had gone as far as we could, so this is one of those things that you cannot operate a facility without an operating fire alarm system, so the support in being able to replace this system is appreciated.
All right, thank you, Mr. Henderson. Any questions for Mr. Henderson before we open it up for public comment? We'll give it 30 seconds for public comment. Oh, sorry, Mr. Harding, you have a question? Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Henderson, I believe, I want to say it was the ice arena, previously we did a system replacement, maybe it was the chiller, but maybe it was something else, but, and I thought one time in the past we changed out a major system using some money that we had been, that we had set aside and had been collecting for a while. Is this, do we have funds like that for the ice arena? And this request is not to come out of one of those funds? Is that correct?
I would like to defer to finance on the actual source. I assume that they did a fund balance. We have done a couple of major projects out of what we call the proceeds from the successful operation. One of them was a we call the proceeds from the successful operation. One of them was the replacement of the entire chiller system. You're absolutely right. And the second one was the front entrance remodel. I saw that John Borghit was on. We have not had the conversation about the source for this appropriation. I'm wondering if he could step on and enlighten lighten both of us together.
Yeah, my understanding was the source was going to be coming from fund balance at the ice sheet. If that's not the case, that's the way the resolution was written, and that was my assumption. I know they've had fund balance in the past, and I assumed that that would be adequate, but if it's not, then we have a problem.
Excellent. Thank you for that. I I see that now, and so let me then commend you and your department on running such a such a good operation that we can pay for these expenses out of these internal funds, or I'm probably using that term incorrectly, but these these funds that are specific to the venue. So great, great job on that.
Thank you for recognizing that. That's really appreciated by our team there.
Hey, we, I'm just gonna wait a little bit for public comment. We'll bring it back to the council in a moment. All right, seeing no public comment. Are there any further questions or comments from the council for discussion? All right, I will call for a vote on the implied motion. We'll begin with Ms. Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Okay, the voting is unanimous with Mr. Sewell excused. Thank you. We'll now move on to item number four, which is an ordinance amending Provo City code inconsistency and clarify accessory living spaces as a permitted accessory use in the Pro R9 limited dense, limited-density residential LDR zone. This has citywide application, and this will be presented by Robert Mills, our city planner.
Thank you, council members. So this is actually just a staff-initiated amendment to this very specific Pro zone. This Pro zone is actually located just south of the cemetery, and it involves about five, excuse me, seven lots, four of which are developed with twin homes. One is currently being developed as a duplex twin home situation. And then there are two properties that you can see on the screen there. Those two top right properties are actually single-family dwellings. In this Pro zone, there was a provision that allowed for permitted accessory dwellings. However, there was an inconsistency in one of the sections, so there was a, it allowed it in the permitted accessory uses, and then there was a a provision in the occupancy restrictions that said that you couldn't have those. So we just clarified that accessory apartments could be allowed in owner-occupied, single-family detached dwellings. And then we removed the the language that restricted the accessory apartment or second kitchen in a permitted dwelling, just to make it consistent. And so really, it just affects two properties in the zone that could actually have an accessory apartment, so just making a couple of clarifications and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. We will have public comment here very shortly. Any questions for Mr. Mills before I turn it to public comment? All right, we'll give it a little bit of time here to wait for public comment. All right, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Any discussion on the council on this item? All right, seeing no discussion. This is the first time that this has been brought before the council. Does any council member desire to consider this item again at the next council meeting? All right, seeing none, I will call for a vote on the implied motion. We'll begin with Mr. Fillmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
All right. The 6-0 in favor with Mr. Sewell excused. We'll turn to item number five, an implied motion on an ordinance amending Provo City code to reduce the minimum lot depth in the low-density residential LDR and very-low-density residential VLDR zones. This also has citywide application, and this will be presented by Brandon Larson, City Planner. Mr. Larson?
There we go. Sorry about that. I forgot to unmute myself and start the video there. Brandon Larson, Development Services Staff. The applicant, Jeff Ranz, is proposing to change the lot depth or amend the lot depth of the VLDR and LDR zone. The applicant, just for a little bit of context, is trying to develop a property located at 189 South, 500 West. He has about 10,000 square feet of property and is interested in developing two two properties there, two lots. Originally, he, in the concept plan that you've seen, he's he has proposed two 5,000-square-foot lots. According to the LDR and VLDR zones, first, he, the reason why we're talking about both the LDR and VLDR is because he started out with proposing LDR, and then the VLDR zone was was established, and I think the the VLDR zone may be seen by, may be seen. So he started out with the LDR, changed the VLDR zone, and you could look at that perhaps as kind of an indication that he's he's intent on low-density on this property, but so he has has this concept plan. He has this idea to basically develop two lots, and long story short, he cannot meet the lot depth requirements. Lot depth requirement says ninety, lot depth requirement in both zones is 90 feet. And he has about 82 and a half feet to work with. Staff notes is as they reviewed this application, they noted that, you know, one, he's he was looking to establish a five thou, two 5,000-square-foot lots. He compared compared that that lot size with with what's available in the R1 zone. There's the R16, and the R17 zone allows for six and 7,000-square-foot lots. And both of those zones have a lot density of 75 instead of 90. For comparison, the R110 zone has a lot depth requirement of of 90 feet, and so I think staff was I think staff is is definitely sympathetic to the proposal because it seems more equitable that if the the applicant is proposing 5,000-square-foot lots and the and and that zone, either the LDR or VLDR, allows 5,000-square-foot lots, that the lot depth probably should line up more with with something more comparable in in the in the ordinance, such as the lot depth requirements in the R17 and R16 zones. Staff thinks that that's, staff believes this is a good a proposal that is is a good one for the city to consider adopting. And believes that it adds a little bit of flexibility in in utilizing the LDR and VLDR zones, and I, staff would note that flexibility is an important thing in in using the LDR and VLDR zones because they're often used for infill type of developments, and so the you know, the right type of flexibility built into that, I think is helpful and 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 good development in those infill situations, so. If you have any questions on that, I'm definitely here to answer them, so.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Any questions for Mr. Larson before we open it up to public comment? All right, we'll open it up for public comment and wait just a moment. Okay, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Any discussion on the council about this item? Mr. Harding?
I'm supportive of this. I I feel that particularly if the R16 and R17 has this lot depth, I think that is another indicator that 75 should be sufficient for lots in in the LDR and VLDR zones. I'm just looking at the site plan, though, and I'm scratching my head. In order to get to the the 5,000 square feet, we've got this diagonal property line, and we've got this little jigsaw puzzle in the back. I worry, I mean, is that really you? Yeah, thank you for whomever sharing the screen, bringing that up. I mean, is that really usable space? It it almost feels like we're making both lots less usable by by doing that, and I guess that's not really the question for us. The question for us is just the depth. But but I I guess I didn't realize that 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 was, you know, a practice that could be done, you know. Expect, you know, at some point, getting the salamander-looking lot just to to get, you know, enough square footage. You know, if if we have these regulations that it needs to be 500 square feet, you know, we're trying to get, you know, a massive property and and, you know, with too many appendages, I don't think it's it's kind of defeating the spirit of the purpose, you know, the spirit of the regulation. But since it's for us, it's just the question of the lot depth, you know, I'll be voting in favor.
Could I speak to that concern just really briefly? So the applicant, so so there were two other applications that were kind of related to this application that you're considering tonight. Those two items were considered. Staff has shares your concern, and so does the Planning Commission. And and I think the applicant, based on his comments last week, is sympathetic to those concerns. There is a proposed text amendment that's going to come in with those continued applications. Staff initiated a text amendment to to kind of address these concerns. One thing that was brought up at the Planning Commission meeting was, you know, what's do we really have a concern with the 4,000-square-foot lot? And I think it it seemed like staff and and at least you want to, you know, one or or more members of the Planning Commission seem like 4,000 didn't seem like a terrible idea to them. So, long story short, there there is a proposal to amend. There will be a a proposal put forward to amend the LDR and VLDR zone to help if if adopted by by this body would would help to but it would help the applicant to produce probably a more functional lot configuration, something that looks a little nicer. And so, yeah, staff and the Planning Commissioner definitely share your concern, and there's there's work by staff and the applicant that is beginning to to address those issues, so.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ellsworth. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna echo the concerns of Mr. Harding and the Planning Commission that ideally we would just have more flexible lot sizes instead of trying to shoehorn in a really goofy lot, so. Thanks for working on that with the developer, and thanks to everyone who's being flexible to create a a common sense solution.
All right, any other discussion of this item? Is that it, Mr. Harding?
Sorry, I thought I had it up. Yes, yes, please. I just wanted to to respond a little bit to that. I I'm glad that that is a concern of multiple people. I think just dropping it to 4,000 might resolve it for this particular instance, but I can imagine the next time someone comes in and they've got, you know, they they can't make a square 4,000 foot lot, so now they they create a little jigsaw puzzle so they can get up to the 4,000. If if the planners, it's just a request from myself, but if if the planners could take a look at, you know, is there is there a functional way of of defining, you know, so you can't just basically do what was trying to be done here to get to the 5,000. Is there some way to say, well, that's actual footage and that's not practical square footage, so that really can't count? Just to avoid, anytime you move the the threshold, you know, you're you're gonna get someone else trying to just barely get over the threshold by doing something like this again. So I'd appreciate if you look at that, and I I like what, I guess it's down now, was up on the screen. I like how there's a number of units per acre. I think it's 15 for LDR and and seven for VLDR. If there was a way to kind of use that, so you have, you allow that flexibility that Ms. Ellsworth was just talking about, where, you know, maybe you maybe you drop down to a 3,500 for one, or maybe it's maybe it's 4,000, maybe 4,000 is below us, but if you drop down to 4,000 on one, then, you know, somewhere else in the project, somewhere else in that zone, you need to have slightly more, so it averages out. You know, and I think that provides the flexibility that we're looking for without necessarily, you know, allowing intensity creep in in what we're trying to achieve.
Thank you for that suggestion. That that's definitely something that staff can look into. We, like I said, are interested in making those zones flexible for infill projects.
All right, any other discussion of this item? Okay, this is the first time that this has been heard on the councils, so does any council member desire to consider this item again at the next council meeting? All right, seeing none, I will call for a vote on the implied motion. We'll begin with Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Okay, voting is unanimous with Mr. Sewell excused. We will move on then to item number six, which is an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately 14 acres of real property, generally located at 1164 South, 1600 West, from agricultural A15 to residential R17. This is in the Sunset neighborhood. And I will, and we will have Brandon Larson again present to us, and then after he ends, we will open it up for public comment.
Thank you. Okay, so you can see on the screen the general location of this property, just at the intersection of 1600 West and 1150 South, just to the west, a little ways. just at the intersection of 1600 West and 1150 South, just to the west, a little ways, maybe a half mile from Footprint or Park. Do I have the ability to control the screen?
I can grab that to you, Brandon. Just a moment.
Thank you. I'm going to take you into a little, a little closer picture here of the property. You've got essentially two parcels, both about seven acres each. In the, like I said, 11, 1600 West, 1150 South, two seven acre parcels there have been, appear to have historically been used for agricultural use. Staff would note that it appears this area is transitioning toward more of a residential use. Staff would note the, the presence of these four or five homes kitty corner from the development and then the not too recently, or not too distant approval of the, of the Kelschaw rezone area. You have 30 lots and I think there's, I think there's actually two plats. I think the 30 lots actually lie just a little farther north than I indicated here, but then there is another plat that should come in for this area as well.
You will have control of the mouse now.
Okay, so we, we have, we have the parcels here. You've got, still having a hard time controlling the screen here. There we go. Try, show you an inner, show you the intersection at 1150 and 1600 West here and then advance to show you that. That, this is looking westward toward the airport. And then this is on 1150 West towards 1600 North. This is on 1600 North, looking north, looking northward. The new, the proposed development lies right in this area right here. This is just kind of a comparison here. Right now you have the property lying surrounded by agricultural, agricultural land. Majority of it's in the A15, five acre agricultural zone. But like I noted, those four or five parcels kitty corner to the, to the property, those actually lie in the one acre agricultural zone. But there does, like I said, appear to, this area appears to be transitioning to, to residential use. There is residential off to the east and to the, to the north. Heron's Landing, which is a little off this map, was also a rezoned for, for Heron's Landing was approved not too long ago for an R17 zoning. The, and, and I'll just make a quick note of the fact that the general plan designation for, for this property, despite being in the agricultural zone, is residential. The, the, this is the Southwest Area Future Land Use map. It was adopted in the recent past. You can see the location of the property on this map, right? If you can see my cursor right in this area here. That yellow coloration indicates the plan for this area is residential development, residential, yeah, residential development. Developed at four acres per unit. And this document helps to establish that that, that that development would be four acres net. So essentially you take, in figuring the, the amount of density, you'd first take out the, the roads in calculating your density. And I'll, I'll make a quick note of that. I'm going to scroll down to a couple of, or a couple of slides here. You can see this density matrix. Again, the, the, the subject lands 14 acres roughly. New, what happened this year was the establishment or adoption of new road, road cross sections. And the result of that for this applicant is the requirement for quite a few, quite a bit more land that would be required to be in, in road right of ways. So it went from 3.2 to almost 4.8. And what that does for him, so prior to the road standards, see, his net density was at 4.37 and now he's at 4.3. The applicant is requesting that despite the fact, again, I'm going to go back up to this map. So this map's, it's establishing a policy that the, that this area should be developed at four unit net density. With those new road standards, he's now at 4.3. He desires to, rather than drop down to 37 lots, he wants to stay at four, at 40 lots. He notes that he has been in, working on this application for many, for many months and years now, trying to get this through. He started out with a higher density development and, and has kind of whittled it down, working with staff and public works. And, and so I think staff is sympathetic to the fact that he is, you know, been in, working at this and, and sympathetic to the idea of perhaps considering giving, granting his request for 4.3 density rather than four, considering the, the fact that his application was in process and, yeah, before those, before the road standards came into being. This is his concept plan, which was approved by the planning commission. You can see 40 lots. The majority of these, 29 of the 40 lots are actually 9,000 square feet or larger. Again, he's asking for R17 zoning. And again, the majority of these lots are more on par with an R18 or R110 zone standard. He has, and I'll go to the next slide here. These, these lots up here that you can see are demarcated with the, with a blue square. These lots are the only ones that I'm aware of that actually don't, along with the one down in the southeast corner, that don't meet an R18, at least an R18 standard. The, the, some of these lots are below 8,000 square feet and some of them, I think this one here actually is 8,000 square feet. It just has, the lot width is below 8,000, 80 feet, which is required in the R18 zone. So the applicant has put forth the concept plan. It's been approved by the planning A couple of, this has gone to a neighbor, this went to a few neighborhood meetings. Some of those neighborhood meetings were before my time at the city, but I did attend a neighborhood meeting on February 6th of this year. And the neighborhood generally seemed to be supportive of the, of the proposal. A couple of things, concerns that have been expressed by neighbors would be the, they note the narrowness of, of 1600 North. They, they note the, the children from this, children who potentially could live on a, in a home in this development would have to, would be assumed, it's assumed they would attend Sunset Elementary. Sunset Elementary lies one half mile north of this development and, and the concern is that they'd be going up narrow 1600, 1600 West, rather excuse me if I, I think I've said north a few times, but 1600 West. And, which has no, for the most part doesn't have curb gutter and sidewalk. The roads are narrow. And so that was certainly expressed by the, by the neighborhood. They were also concerned by, and the applicant can speak more to this, but there, there's obviously a sewer issue on this sewer concern, sewer availability concern in the southwest area of the city. And so the, the workaround for sewer is to try to build the land up to get the depth to be able to lay the line, the sewer lines. And the, the neighborhood was concerned about the, the prospects of that land being built up and, and living next to land that might sit potentially six to seven feet higher than them. I think the applicant can address the, that concern a little bit about building up the land. So those are probably two of the biggest concerns, the three biggest concerns that I recall was the narrowness of 1600 West, the grading, and then safety of kids going to school because of the narrowness of 1600 West. There are concerns, staff, staff notes those, the planning commission notes those. But, but staff and the planning commission both feel that this is, this development isn't appropriate. This development and more so, and more specifically the rezone is appropriate. Again, the, the property, this area generally appears to be transitioning to residential use. The applicant has explained how he would gradually use a gradual treatment of, he would gradually grade the property so that, that the, so that wouldn't appear to, that there was like a six or seven foot like retaining wall and then the, this development sitting on top. Staff feels that despite these concerns, that, that, that R17 zoning is appropriate, especially considering the fact that he has put forth a concept plan that shows this development looking more like an R18 or R110 development with, with just a few exceptions. So staff would, would recommend to the city council approval of this rezone. And certainly here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Yeah, any questions for Mr. Larson before public comment? Ms. Ellsworth, go ahead.
Mr. Larson, I think that, yeah, the area plan says it's supposed to be a quarter acre net. But to me, that just seems like we're perpetuating a pattern of, of sprawl that's not really conducive with economic or ecological sustainability. Is that something that we should keep doing? Is building at these low densities all over?
Well, if we go back to the plan, I think that plan shows areas, areas where more than just quarter acre density would be allowed. We've got some MDR and LDR zoning, which would certainly allow for more than quarter acre densities. I know that the community and neighborhood services continuing to refine this, this map. And I think there is some, some, so I, I, I think that, that it's possible that maybe, that in certain situations, maybe more development should occur, more dense development. But I, I think that again, community, community and neighborhood services is looking into that. I think as far as the neighborhood goes, I know they were, they liked the, the proposal. I think they liked the density proposed. I think that based on what I heard from the neighborhood, they were, I think that kind of what was proposed on this map for that specific area seemed in line with what they wanted.
Mr. Fillmore?
Are there any plans for widening 1600 West?
I think I defer to Mr. Day. I should note that David Day is also here and, and there, there probably will be some engineering questions on this one. David would probably be the best person to talk to on engineering. And then the applicant also is prepared and probably would like to, to offer some thoughts as well on his proposal.
Okay. I'd also like to ask Mr. Shipley if this development in his district also brings a tear to his eye.
I don't know how to respond to that, Bill.
Are you in favor of that?
Well, I think, I think generally, you know, this, this matches what the neighborhood originally wanted. Outside of that, it looks pretty vanilla. I mean, as far as, you know, more single family homes. So I, I don't, I'm not especially excited about it, but I don't think that's, there's any conflict with what, you know, with what was originally planned.
Okay, thanks.
I could comment on the 1600s West. Right now, we're just planning for 1600 West to be developed and widened as it develops. So we're about halfway up 1600 West from 1150 South up to 6 South. We're about half that way on the east side. Part of that was the Kelschaw project that went in on the east side there. When that Kelschaw is complete, there would be a sidewalk path all the way from this development, all the way up to Sunset Elementary that would bypass the narrower portions of 1600 West.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Any question, any other questions before I open it up for public comment? Let's open it up then for public comment. I'll give some time to allow people to call I'll also note that the neighborhood chair, Becky Bogdan, has sent us extensive comments on this via email. I see callers. I don't know if any of those callers are her or others from the community who want to comment. Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to Mr. Harding. You have a comment?
Yeah, thank you. I tried to raise my hand just before you have a comment, but I wanted to follow up on Mr. Fillmore's question about, about the question of 1600 West. In the, in the development policies that were, for West Provo, that were developed by a large stakeholder committee and adopted by the council, it, I even think it uses quotation marks around leapfrog development and then tries to define that a little bit. And this question has come up previously. What exactly constitutes leapfrog development? You know, if it has, if it's, has one adjacent side that's developed, you know, and it's kind of protruding out with three sides that aren't. And, you know, is, is two enough? Is, is, you know, what exactly is, is leapfrog development? But now we're looking at a, a project that does not touch any land that is already zoned residential. It is kitty corner to some homes that are in agriculturally zoned land, but it's down the street from residentially zoned land. And so I'm just wondering if, if, if this doesn't constitute leapfrog development, you know, is, is there going to be a case where staff is not willing to recommend something based on it, you know, being leapfrog development? And, and I think where this, where we see this, that the impacts, one of the ways that we see the impacts is, is the development of 1600 West. If we feel like 1600 West is not particularly safe for children to walk, and I would say probably what makes it unsafe for them to walk will be all the parents who are driving at the same time to get their kids to the schools. That, that's where the traffic is going to come from. But we will have, you know, that conflict between pedestrians and automobiles, all going to the school at the same time. If, if we were sequencing the development a little bit more sequentially, then 1600 West would be developing as we go out, rather than putting this development out on an island beyond where 1600 West has been, has been, you know, developed. So other, other than that, I actually really like, I think this is a good proposal, or at least as good as we're going to get with, with our current zoning options that we, that we offer developers. But I am a little bit worried about the leapfrog nature of this, of, that was what I see is the leapfrog nature of this
Any other discussion on the council? All right, seeing none then. All right, uh, seeing none, then, um, this is, uh, the first time this item has been considered by the council. So, does any council member desire to consider this item again at the next council meeting? All right, seeing no request for that, then I will call for a vote on the implied motion. Uh, uh, we'll begin with Mr. Shipley.
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mr. Harding?
I'll vote an unenthusiastic yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes, and maybe I I'll actually wanna ask the question after the vote, not related to the vote totally.
Okay, that voting is unanimous with Mr. Sewell excused. Mr. Hoben, what do you wish to say about the vote?
Well, I wanted to ask just in general, leapfrog developments. This has come up a couple of times. And, I mean, the way I'm looking at it is, I understand we don't want these these developments that are passwork all over, but frankly, we have people coming to us saying, I wanna build. And, you know, we can't always dictate the market. And so, I guess I'm just, how do we balance that? Because we want people to develop more housing. Especially, hey, great, single family, you know, that's what a lot of neighborhoods want and and then we're just gonna tell them no, 'cause it's a leapfrog, you know, they're ready to spend money, they're ready to help develop Provo and we're gonna tell them no. I mean, what would be a situation where we would say that the leapfrog is worse than than getting more development? That that frankly, most people are okay with.
Well, I I guess it maybe infrastructure is the the key here. I, you know, as I reviewed this, I saw it being three, three and five hundred feet away and kitty corner to some development that looked like it was kind of residential in nature. And so, um, it, like I said, it was it was three hundred, three eighty and three twenty and four eighty, some somewhere in that neighborhood, uh, away from other residential development. And I thought, you know, i- is it a little, is it leapfrogging a little bit perhaps? But but my thought was uh, in in reviewing that is that this helps to kind of get the ball rolling for more development in the area, which will hopefully help get this, get the ball moving for more improvements up the road and and in the area, was was my thought, so.
Okay, thanks. I can talk more about it with you guys later. I was just, you know, curious what what the downside is to leapfrogging and then, you know, how we weigh the cost benefit or the pluses and minuses, so, thanks.
All right, thank you, everybody. Um, so the next, uh, few items have been either, uh, item number seven was withdrawn. Nine and ten have been continued. So, if there is no objection, we will now adjourn as, uh, the Provo Municipal Council by unanimous consent. Thank you all and have a wonderful, wonderful evening.
Do we, do we know what time we're meeting on Thursday?
Uh, we believe that it'll be five thirty.
Okay, thank you.